Good morning and welcome to the March 6, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, this morning I have two brief updates. First, I'd like to bring up our Health Director, Adrian Byrne, to give you an update on the flu.
Morning, Adrian.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. So I did want to provide an update on flu. I probably will try to insert "Get Your Flu Shot" throughout the brief presentation so that people will grab a hold of that. So Kansas, among other states, is still having quite high flu activity. In Sedgwick County, our visits to the outpatient clinics was higher last week than the week before. So it is very alive and well in Sedgwick County. We're not quite sure we've even hit our peak yet. We know that flu season creates a burden for the United States every year. We really haven't had an idea just how much because flu is not a reportable illness unless it involves the death of a child. This is the first year that Senate for Disease Control has released a report to give us a little bit of an idea of what that looks like. And keep in mind that this year has been much more mild, much less severe than what last year was when I read these numbers. So between October 1 and February 23 of this year, Senate for Disease Control estimated the number of medical visits that have occurred in the U.S. related to influenza-like symptoms to be between 9.5 and 11 million visits, over 270 million hospitalizations, and estimated deaths so far well over 17,000. And we know deaths occur every year in Kansas, hundreds that are related to influenza. So while we can't eliminate all of those visits and all of those hospitalizations, we know that we can drastically reduce those numbers by getting an annual flu shot. Anyone six months and older can get a flu shot unless it's recommended by their physician, not too. It's important to practice or even amp up the daily good hygiene of washing hands and soap and water. Hand sanitizer is okay to use if soap and water is not available, but soap and water is the best prevention from spreading the flu and other viruses and diseases, coughing or sneezing into a tissue or the elbow, staying home if you're ill and if one has the flu, you feel so bad you're not going to go to work, and doing your best to stay away from someone that's ill. Flu shots are still available. It's recommended that when flu is still present in the community to get flu shots. So while March may seem like late in the season, it's not. Not when flu activity is still as high as it is in present. So please, anyone that hasn't gotten their flu shot, they still are available. We do have flu shots available at our 2716 West Central location for uninsured adults 19 and older, uninsured children 18 and younger, and children that are on health-sponsored health insurance. And if anyone has a question about their eligibility, they can call our number at 660-7300, and we'll be provided with that information.
Well, thank you, Adrian, for bringing that timely information to us. I know I got my flu shot last October. So far, knock on wood, it's still effective. Thank you very much.
Yes, and we do know that flu can reduce the chances of getting the flu shot, or the flu shot does reduce the severity and duration if one does get the flu, and definitely stops the spread from others. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
All right, and now I'd like to bring up Cody Sharvet with Emergency Management to talk about Severe Weather Awareness Week.
Good morning, Cody.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Cody Sharvet with Sedgwick County Emergency Management. And as Kate mentioned, we are right in the middle of Severe Weather Awareness Week. And I'm not much at predicting the weather, but I can promise you that winter will let go eventually, and we will have to be ready for springtime severe storms. We use this time every year to remind folks to think about where they are, what they would do, where they would go if severe weather struck any time that they were away from home. Do you know where your shelter area is at work, at church, anywhere that you might spend a lot of time? We started our severe weather safety classes last week. I have one at McConnell Air Force Base as soon as I leave here this morning, another one tonight in Colwich, and about 15 more around the county that folks can still attend. They are free and open to the public, and I promise no one will try to recruit you to be a storm chaser afterwards if that's not your thing. But you will learn how to read the clues that Mother Nature provides in order to keep you and your family safe. We had the statewide tornado drill yesterday, and we want to continue to remind folks about the importance of preparedness. The basics are the same as they are every year: build a kit, make a plan, stay informed. If you're not sure how to meet all of those, then download the Sedgwick County Government App. It has lots of great information on all three of those components. And finally, one of the most important things we try to stress each year is that this is not Tornado Awareness Week, this is Severe Weather Awareness Week. And it doesn't take a tornado to be dangerous. Flooding is still the number-one killer of all severe weather events, plus lightning, hail, and high wind. All are capable of causing damage, injuries, and even fatalities, as we saw the tragic consequences that the duck boat accident on Table Rock Lake last year. That was the result of a squall-lined thunderstorm. Nothing tornatic about that. So we encourage folks to take all severe weather threats seriously and not tune out simply because it's just a severe thunderstorm warning. That is all I have for you this morning, unless you have any questions or comments for me.
I don't see any questions, but we appreciate you being here to bring us up to feed on what we're doing.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
All right, and just a recap of the agenda this morning. There are several board appointments, two items related to the Wichita-Sedgwick County Exploited and Missing Child Unit, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. And so Chairman, I'll hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you very much, Kate. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome everyone that's visiting with us here in the audience and those that are joining us by TV or online. At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order for Wednesday, March 6, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Marcia Haney, Bethany United Methodist Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning to everyone. Let us pray. Creator of everything on earth, above and below the earth, I say thank you for our life, health, and strength. Thank you for all government leaders who are compassionate about our great city and county. I request your continual peaceful presence upon our county, all county leaders, and their teams. Lord, thank you for giving them the ability to work together for the common good of all citizens. Grant your continual wisdom, favor, knowledge, and strategies to make our county one of the fastest-growing, efficient around. Give each of our council leaders the ability to discern the best practices, partnerships for our county. Dear Lord, bless this meeting this day and these leaders, and give them the great courage and the uplifting spirit of community to overcome every obstacle that gets in their path. Let this be their best year for governing and helping families in our communities. I pray in Jesus's name. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for the invocation this morning. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I just had one person sign up on public agenda, but I think it was a mistake because it was Pastor Haney that signed up, and I think she has departed. So, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A: Regular meeting minutes of January 30, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from January 30, February 6, and February 13. I make a motion and we approve all three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Appointments. Item D: Resolution appointing Jeff Fawcett to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in Position Number 13 for the 3rd District.
Mr. Papoun.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Mike Papoun, interim county councillor. You have before you a resolution appointing Jeff Fawcett, which is the chairman's appointment to the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee in Position 13 for the 3rd District. This is a two-year appointment, and it will expire in December 31, 2020. The resolution's in proper form, and I'd ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Jeff Fawcett is a local waste management individual. He's very familiar with the subject, so I move that we approve the appointment. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And is... You want to get sworn in, sir?
Give him more, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Solid Waste Management Committee, Position Number 13, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations. If you'd like to say anything.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett. We appreciate you taking on the responsibility. Next item, please.
Item E: Resolution appointing Frances Seidel to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities for District 1.
Mr. Papoun.
Yes. Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county councillor. I would ask that we consider Items E, F, and G altogether. All three items are appointments by Commissioner Meitzner to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. They're all reappointments for four-year terms. The first appointment is appointing Frances Seidel. Second appointment is to appoint Mary Ellen Phillips to continue her role on the committee, and the third is to appoint Debbie Wilsey. So all three resolutions are in proper form, and I ask that the commission approve the resolution.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman, and I would like to make a motion to approve this. These are continuation of appointees that former Commissioner Dave Unruh appointed, so thank you for your past service, and I'd like to make a motion for your continued service.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
All right, ladies. Can you just let this stand here? Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities, so help me God. Congratulations. If you'd like to say anything, Kate.
I just appreciate the continued opportunity to serve. It's a really enthusiastic and supportive group, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that appointment, and we think we do a good job in terms of our appointment.
Thank you also. The three of us worked very, very well, and I think, in fact, the whole advisory council as it now stands is working extremely well and better than I've seen. When I started 14 years ago, it was kind of spotty. It's not that way anymore, and I'm real proud of what we get her accomplishing.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. Mary Ellen, and Mom would say hi. If she... If Mom was here, she would say hi. If Katie was here.
Oh, okay. Well, she was a lovely lady.
Thank you.
Ladies, congratulations. Thank you very much for serving. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item H: Resolution appointing Travis Cutler to the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction in the Registered Waterwell Driller Position.
Commissioners, Mike Papoun, interim county councillor, again. This is a commission appointment to the Sedgwick County Advisory Board for On-Site Waterwell Construction. It's the recommendation that Mr. Travis Cutler be appointed to this board. We'd ask that you approve the resolution.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for Travis Cutler.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Not present? Okay. Next item, then.
Item I: Resolution appointing Brent Shelton to the South Central Kansas Economic Development District Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Yes, this is again a board appointment to the South Central Kansas Economic Development District Board, and the resolution is recommending the appointment of a very own Brent Shelton to the board, and would ask that you approve the resolution in proper form.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for Brent Shelton.
We have a motion. Do it.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of South Central Kansas Economic Development District and Board of Directors, so help me God. I do. All right, there you go. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to represent Sedgwick County on SCED's Board of Directors. Look forward to working with them to enhance economic vitality and quality of life in our region as their mission.
Very good. Well, that's the shortest you've ever been up and spoken to us, so...
I've been accused of never meeting a microphone I didn't like, so with that, I'll stand.
Congratulations. Thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item J: Memorandum of Understanding Regarding the Wichita-Sedgwick County Exploited and Missing Child Unit.
Good morning, Colonel Powell.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Colonel Richard Powell with the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff's Office is bringing before you this morning two items for your consideration that actually have ties to each other. They both deal with the operations of the Exploited and Missing Children's Unit, which is a joint venture between the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, the Wichita Police Department, and the Department of Children and Families. They are located in the Child Advocacy Center, where they also have other stakeholders involved, people that are involved in that particular center down there. The first item we're bringing to your bench for consideration is the Memorandum of Understanding for the overall day-to-day operations of the organization, which again has the three entities involved, and then also is controlled by a Board of Directors, which you have a membership on that board and other parties that have stakeholders involved. This is an annual request that we have on a regular, ongoing basis that we bring before you. It just simply ratifies the agreement that we've had in place now for many years and allows for the continued successful operation and the participants involved, the Sheriff's Office, the Police Department, and DCF, to equally fund each one-third of the respective pieces that we put into play with this Exploited and Missing Children's Unit. Since we have two new Commissioners on the bench in this meeting today, I brought along with me Lieutenant Dale Mattern. Lieutenant Mattern from the Wichita Police Department is the commander of EMCU, which also oversees the ICAC or Internet Crimes Against Children's subset. And I thought I would, if your schedule allows, if there's no objections, I would have Lieutenant Mattern make a few comments about EMCU and what they do, how they do it, et cetera, maybe take a brag minute or two, and give just some good educational information to the new Commissioners that are on the bench. So Lieutenant Dale Mattern with the Police Department.
Good. Well, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Lieutenant Dale Mattern. I am a lieutenant with the Wichita Police Department and currently assigned as the commander of EMCU. The Wichita Police Department, Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office, and Department of Children and Families have jointly operated the Exploited and Missing Child Unit since 1985. EMCU has a proven track record for helping children and their caregivers in our community. EMCU is a collaborative, multidisciplinary investigation section with a goal to minimize secondary trauma to child victims. Over the past five years, EMCU has averaged 620 child sex crimes investigations, 811 child abuse or endangerment cases, 59 outside requests for assistance, 1,816 runaway investigations, 1,767 DCF intakes, and 54 child in need of care petitions annually. EMCU works in partnership with the Child Advocacy Center of Sedgwick County to provide therapy for victims and their families, including advocacy during the court process. This specialized unit assists all law enforcement agencies in Sedgwick County, as well as other agencies throughout the state of Kansas.
Well, thank you very much for coming over and speaking with us today. I do serve on that board. I understand your statistics. It would be perfect world if we would have you briefing us and that there were no problems.
Yes.
But unfortunately, there are, and we have to have a group like this and something like the Child Advocacy Center in order to be able to help protect those that can't... We have a couple of comments from a couple of our Commissioners. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lieutenant and Colonel, thank you for addressing... The Chairman mentioned he serves on the board, and he couldn't make a meeting, and I got to sit on the last meeting. And I... There's a lot of boards that we all kind of sit on, but I tell you, it was very eye-opening to me and a very, very learning experience just to sit through the hour-and-a-half meeting that we had and know the severity and the large breadth of what you all are trying to do with this child advocacy stuff, so... Thanks, and I hope we can support and continue to support as the technology changes, the reality that children have all kinds of media tools to get abused and abused and bullied and everything. It was very fascinating to be in the meeting, and I'm very supportive of what we need to do to keep that mission going.
Thank you, sir, and we would certainly extend an open invitation to all members of the commission any time that you feel you would like to refresh your memory or take a first-time tour and understand the ins and outs of the organization and meet some of the staff. Lieutenant Mattern and his staff would certainly make themselves available, and we'd love to have you come down and take a look at it if you have a chance.
Thank you.
We have a comment from Commissioner Cruz.
I was just going to say, Tim Norton called me up and said, "You got to go tour the Child Advocacy Center," and so we went and took a tour of it. And one thing that I didn't realize was it, you know, it used to be in the basement, and now it's a nice facility where there's a separate entrance for victims and perpetrators. So I really feel like the center itself was really impressive. The room in the back with the sand where children could describe what had happened to them. I mean, it just pulls at my heartstrings that children go through this, and I think they said that only like 10% of cases are actually reported, and so that means there are so many other cases out there that we don't even hear about. So these numbers that you rattled off, you know, 1,800 runaways, 811 abused children, I mean, it's just, it's really... The work that you do is so incredible, and I just really appreciate what you do on a daily basis because I couldn't do it. I couldn't do it. And the other thing that I just want to point out is the workout room that you guys have to de-stress and those kinds of things, because when you see somebody's trauma on a daily basis and you have to live that, wow, I just really commend you guys for what you do.
Thank you very much. We try and do our best.
A little bit additional discussion for you. I would remind you that the budget for purposes of operation during our county 2019 budget has already been set. For the equal parts of the three players, each is contributing approximately $47,000. The total budget is about $141,000. Approval of this particular request has no bearing on the budget that's already in place. There's no additional funding asked for, anything like that, just simply to continue with the working agreement that we have in place now. So I gladly will stand for any other questions. If not, I would respectfully request your consideration and subsequent approval of this item.
Thank you. We do have one more comment from Commissioner Howell.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just first of all, thank you, Lieutenant Mattern and Colonel Powell for the presentation, and I agree with Commissioner Cruz. Those numbers, you rattled them off pretty quickly, and I think it's very sobering for the community to hear that. One of my questions would be, how are our trends? You named a number of different statistics, but I guess I would like to know, as a policymaker and a commissioner of this, of a community here, what are the trends looking like? Are things getting worse or getting better? How would you characterize those?
Generally, our cases go up roughly 7% to 10% each year. So a lot of that, we know there are more cases out there that don't get reported, but our caseload goes up about 7% to 10% each year for the past five years or so, anyway.
Well, that's not what I wanted to hear, but again, I appreciate the good work that you all do, and I have been in there numerous times to see the facility, as well as I served on the EMCU board as a commissioner when I was chairman in 2016, and it's just a tremendous experience to see what all goes on over there. And just as a way of remembering exactly what all the CAC does, you mentioned the ICAC and EMCU, but there's a third component. Can you talk about that?
Sure. The third component is we partner with the Department of Children and Families. Along with all of the law enforcement officers, we work together with child protection specialists from DCF, and we try and come up with... The law enforcement handles the criminal side of the investigation, while DCF handles the social sides. They look at long-term placement for children and that kind of thing.
Well, I sure appreciate what you do, and I know that you all try to get people the things they need, the physical things they need. You have some materials you hand out, counseling, just the things that you guys do is tremendous. So I would classify this... I like to use this term once in a while. I don't use it very often, but this is what I call good government. We need this type of service in this community, and I think I'm proud of the commission for being a partner in the CAC and the EMCU and members on that board that serve. So thank you both for what you do, and I would like to make a motion. We would approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the chairman to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Colonel Richard Powell. The item I'm bringing before you now is just a continuation of the previous item we just discussed. Whereas the first item was a overall MOU for all of the stakeholders involved, this item is a renewal of an existing MOU with DCF, the Department of Children's and Families. They have a continual agreement, as our other stakeholders do, but every year they have to actually affect and adopt a change to their agreement per the way they do business. And this is a simple request to acknowledge the change of their existing MOU with us that just simply extends it into this budget year. Again, there's no financial considerations on our part we need to be concerned about. It just simply extends the agreement beyond what it was in the previous agreed-to period of time. I would respectfully again request your consideration and subsequent approval, and Lieutenant Mattern and I will certainly stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Colonel Powell. I don't see any questions, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment and authorize me to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all very much for being here today. I appreciate it. Next item, please.
Item L, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on February 28, 2019.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that was conducted of the Board of Bids and Contracts of February 28th results in three items for your consideration this morning. Item number one are road improvements for public works. This is the 2019 Crack Seal Project. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Cornejo and Sons LLC in the amount of $429,126.60. Our second item is Kronos Workforce Maintenance Support for Information Technology and Support Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Kronos Incorporated and this is in the amount of $91,751.58. And our final item is the Adult Detention Facility Jail Pod VCT Flooring Removal for Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Great American Hardwood Flooring and this is in the amount of $547,801. I'll try to answer any questions you may have and I'll be happy to recommend the approval of these three items.
I don't see any questions from any of the Commissioners this morning. I know we've been briefed on each of these items, so I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Morning, Commissioners. Tom Stills, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items M through S.
Thank you. Move that we approve. Mike through Sierra.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Morning, Commissioners. Don't have a lot to report at this time. Last week was, last Thursday was turnaround up in Topeka, which as former legislators on our board understand was a time when the original bills were to get through one of the, either the House or the Senate and go to the other House chamber. Some of the bills we are tracking, House Bill 2084 involves a 911 fee increase. That has been amended in such a way that could potentially cost the county $100,000 if not, if not taken care of and we're going to be closely tracking that bill. Couple of our bills that we've been working on, House Bill 2238, our nuisance abatement bill, and Senate Bill 129, which is an election bill that would allow voters to vote at any polling place have stalled somewhat, but we're still looking at strategies to keep those bills moving. There's a bill today, House Bill 2345, which would allow some relief under the tax lid, which is being supported by the Kansas Association of Counties. And for right now, that's most of the activity that's going on up in Topeka from the county's perspective.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Papoon?
Oh.
Mr. O'Donnell.
I had lunch with Senate President Susan Wagle yesterday and she said that Jason had been working with her and that her office was working with everything and they fully supported our agenda and felt really good about a lot of the things we were working on. So, good report, just that Jason had been working with her staff on everything. So she was very high on that yesterday. So, just good, good update. It's really beneficial to have so much legislative leadership in Sedgwick County because they get it. And she was particularly interested in the, the bill that would allow anybody to vote at any polling location. She said we should have done this, you know, whenever we had electronic voting machines a decade ago, she couldn't believe we were that far behind. So, and apparently the rest of the state's looking at that, that they want to jump on that as well, particularly the more urban counties, the five major urban counties.
Very good.
Good update.
Thank you. Well, I think our staff are obvious, everyone is doing a great job up there in Topeka and we've got some issues that we're trying to get through. The legislators are listening to us. We had three come down to 911 a couple of days ago to tour our 911 facility to understand what the impact was going to be on that. The property tax relief, that's the one for transportation only? Is that the one you're talking about?
No, this is, this is one that would just, it's got a formula that would give cities and counties a little more flexibility with the tax lid, doing them on averaging some levees and such. I don't know how much traction this bill has, but again, it's getting its first hearing today in House tax, so we'll see how that, that goes.
Okay. And 129, excuse me, is the one that Commissioner O'Donnell spoke about. So those are several bills that are very important to us. We appreciate the update.
Welcome.
Okay. Next item, please.
Other.
So any Commissioners have anything to discuss during other? And I do, and I forgot to bring it in. Come on. Anyway, I apologize, but I showed the Commissioners, we got a very, very nice ginormous thank you card from all of the zoo employees thanking us for looking towards the future of the zoo and helping with the 25-year master plan. And I will try and remember to bring that next time so everyone can see it. It was laying on my desk and I just forgot to pick it up. But I just want to tell the folks from the zoo, they work very hard to make that the number one tourist attraction here in the state. We appreciate everything that they do every single day. We believe in what they're doing and we thank them very much for the card that I didn't bring in. Anyway, anyone else have anything for other? Seeing nothing, next item, please.
Executive Session.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I'd like to move that the Board of County Commissioners recess in the executive session for 20 minutes until 10:05 for consultation with the Attorney for County Related Matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation. And in addition, issues related to possible waiver of the attorney-client privilege in limited circumstances and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from the executive session no sooner than 10:05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. We're in recess.
Every 12 minutes, someone in the U.S. dies from suicide. It's the 10th leading cause of death in America, killing more than 44,000 people each year. Truth is, most people thinking about suicide don't actually want to die, but need help staying alive.
When I felt suicidal, I came to the Community Crisis Center.
A 24-hour resource center for mental health assistance and suicide prevention.
Where I spoke with a therapist and discussed my feelings.
By providing face-to-face interaction.
It was determined I'd be admitted to the Crisis Observation Unit.
For crisis treatment planning.
To work with a case manager to come up with a plan to ensure my safety.
Clinical staff are ready to help.
They are always friendly and supportive.
Going above and beyond.
To help me if I begin having increased urges to hurt myself.
With the encouragement and support from the Community Crisis Center.
I am currently 323 days self-harm free.
Educating yourself and others on the warning signs can play a crucial role in saving someone else's life. If you or someone you know is contemplating suicide, take it seriously and get help. Call the Community Crisis Center today at 316-660-7500.
Welcome to the new tag office located at 5620 East Kellogg Drive in Wichita. This space will be a lot larger. We will have a total of 25 clerks working in this location. We will be able to provide better efficiencies to better serve our customers. In this location, they'll be able to do any ADA transactions, registration renewals, and title work. So you will not be able to get your driver's license here. But the other addition is the Kansas Highway Patrol is not going to be located in this The three satellites that we are consolidating are at the Brittany Center at 21st and Woodlawn. The other one in Wichita is located at 21st and May's Road behind Delons at Chadsworth Shopping Center. And then our third one is in Derby located at 212 Greenway. We felt that as a managerial decision, it would be better to combine those three offices into one larger office after we've seen such great success at the 2525 West Douglas Tag Office. It's going to reduce some staff time. It's going to reduce stress time. It's going to, it's going to improve morale and it's just going to be better for the citizens overall. I know all the small towns would love to have their own tag office. So what we're working on right now is the possibility of getting a kiosk solution. Johnson County has got them in their tag offices, but I don't know if theirs is the solution that I'm looking for for Sedgwick County. I've been working with Kansas Department of Revenue on some different options, but it'd be very limited to where we could put those kiosks. So that's why we're going to do a request for proposals, see what other options are out there to get us the best fit at the best price for our county. You can renew by mail or via the ICAN app. Customers are welcome to go to the office at 2525 West Douglas. I also highly recommend not waiting until the last day of the month to come. That's when we seem to always be the busiest. We always have been, we always will be. One of the best things that we've ever implemented in Sedgwick County is the online virtual waiting system, Qless. You can go out to the county website and you can get on via any kind of electronic device. You can get your virtual spot in line. It will send you text messages on how long your wait times are and it's been very, very, very helpful. The satellite offices at Brittany, Chadsworth, and Derby will close at end of business on Friday, December 7th, and then the new Kellogg Tag Office will open at noon on Monday, December This new location will be more convenient for our customers and staff. I'm happy that we're finally able to complete this project.
I want to welcome everyone to this very important event that's involving our EMS. Our EMS is something that I am very proud of in Sedgwick County and have fought hard to make sure that we keep it the premier organization that it is. And it's one of only a handful across the United States that is fully accredited. Post 8 was originally, came into service in 1991 and it's been an active post ever since that period of time. However, if you'd have seen it just not too many months ago, this was kind of a disaster actually. When I first walked through it, it needed an awful lot of work.
Several years ago, the plan was to tear this place down, buy some land somewhere else and build a new one for $1.9 million. We kind of asked some questions about that and said, let's, let's, let's think about doing something else. We ended up with this, a remodel for a little over $400,000. That's still not cheap, but it saved $1.5 million and I think we're going to have a fantastic facility here. This is an example of making good decisions, of supporting our first responders in public safety in a cost-effective way. I think the taxpayers can be proud of what we have, our EMS folks can be proud of what we have, and I look forward to this facility continuing to serve the community for many, many years to come.
I think it's a great improvement from what it was. It definitely allows for an additional truck in here and more space to move around. We're not sitting on top of each other. We have a place to cook, so that's great.
I was stationed up here for over 10 years and over that time, you saw just a subtle decline in the facility, but boy, they've come in and just redone everything nice and ready to come back and serve this part of the community again.
This is a big day for, for the community up here in the north end of Sedgwick County. We renovated this building for $400,000. Originally, the project was scheduled to be a total demolish and redo and cost $1.9 million. We saved $1.5 million, but at the same time, we have a terrific facility that's been renovated. It's in a perfect location and I think the crews will really enjoy it and I think the community will benefit greatly.
I want to welcome everyone to this important event. Really, a core priority that we have here in Sedgwick County is having a safe and secure community and that's provided with our EMS as a very key part of it. Sedgwick County continuously looks for ways to enhance our services to support our residents. This new post will expand our coverage and improve our response times to the outer areas of Sedgwick County. We also want to note that just yesterday, we established a new ambulance service in Garden Plain and that provides better coverage on the western half of Sedgwick County. So we're responding to the needs of our residents across Sedgwick County.
Thanks to all of you who are here this afternoon to help us with this ceremony to open this outstanding facility. This new facility, I think, is strategically located and it's part of our long-term strategic plan to provide for growth in our community and in our county. And this location here, with its capacity for two crews, accomplishes that, that goal. It's a pre-engineered building and one of the advantages of doing that is that it saves us quite a bit of money. Originally, this project, I think, was on the books for as much as $1.7 million and I think we end up having just right around $1.1 million in a facility. I think this will be a great facility. It'll serve all our citizens in total, but especially those in northeast Sedgwick County. It's a great facility and I'm glad that you all are here to help us celebrate the opening.
Very much looking forward to it because right now, we're sharing space with a fire station, or in a fire station, and this is going to give us the room that we need to really do our jobs much better. As a paramedic, this is a great building. That'll help us serve the citizens in Sedgwick County and in this part of Wichita.
This is going to help northeast Sedgwick County. As most people who reside out here, who have occasion to travel out here know, there's been somewhat of an explosion in both residential and commercial and business activity. So that means a lot more people and that comes with that, is need for emergency services. I am really pleased that we were able to get this project completed before I left office and I know that our Project Services Department, Tonya Cole and Sandy Angelov, worked real hard with the construction company and the architects to get this done while I was still here. And although I'm not the focus of this project, it is kind of fun to be part of the ribbon cutting in my last week of office.
The Wichita-Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center is a combined facility with personnel from the Wichita Police Department and the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office. The training center requires all applicants seeking the position of police officer, deputy sheriff, or detention deputy to pass a series of physical agility tests. The tests are designed to evaluate the physical fitness, the physical agility, and the strength of the applicant. Here is what you can expect and what you will need to do to pass the physical agility tests. All applicants should wear clothes they can move in and be comfortable in. Athletic clothing, like a tee-shirt and shorts or sweatpants, is a good example of proper clothing to wear for the physical agility tests. Also, wear athletic shoes with good traction. Sandals are not allowed. The first physical agility test is push-ups. You will do as many as you can in one minute. Here is what a proper push-up looks like. Your feet should be no more than shoulder width apart, hands in line with your shoulders, and hip and torso in a straight position. You will be required to go all the way down within inches of the mat or until the elbows are at 90 degrees and then back up. Be sure to maintain a tempo during the test so each push-up is done correctly and counted. The second physical agility test is sit-ups. Once again, you will be asked to perform the maximum number of sit-ups in one minute. Here is what a proper sit-up looks like. Notice that your knees are slightly bent, your feet are flat on the ground, and arms crossed over the chest. You will then lift your upper body from the mat until you are at or near a 90-degree angle or a straight position. or when the elbows are on the knees, then back down. Only proper sit-ups will be counted. The third physical agility test is called the Illinois Agility Run. This is a timed course that assesses an applicant's speed and agility. You will begin the test on your stomach with your fingertips behind the starting point and feet together. On the start command, you will get to your feet as quickly as possible and sprint to the top of the course and touch the line with one foot. You will then sprint back down to the bottom end of the course at the starting area. You will then weave through a series of cones to the top end, then weave back. After completing the weave, you will sprint to the line at the top of the course, touching the line with your foot, then sprint back down to the bottom of the course and finish line. Time will stop after you cross the finish line. You must finish the course without knocking over any cones. The final physical agility test administered is called the multi-stage run, or the beep test. The purpose of this test is to measure cardiovascular fitness and maximum oxygen uptake, or the VO2 max. You will start on a designated line and be required to run a distance of 20 meters to another line marked at the other end. An audible signal, or beep, will tell you when to run each time. As the test progresses through a series of levels, the time between the beeps will become shorter. You will continue to run from one end to the other until you are unable to keep up with the pace of the test. The monitor of the test will signal a warning if you fail to reach the line in time. You will have to stop if you fail to reach the line on two consecutive attempts. The monitor will announce the level in which you reached before stopping. Please remember the level you reached so it can be recorded later. In order to pass the physical agility test required by the Wichita Sedgwick County Law Enforcement Training Center, the applicant must complete each test and obtain a minimum cumulative score of 20 points. Scores are based on an individual's age and gender. You are encouraged to practice these tests before your evaluation. They can easily be practiced anywhere without any special equipment. Wichita Police Department applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3810, or online at www.wichita.gov/wpd. Sedgwick County Sheriff applicants that have questions about the testing can contact the training center at 316-660-3800, or online at www.sedgwickcounty.org.
Having a safe and secure community is very important in Sedgwick County. The Office of Medical Director plays a key role in providing clinical leadership and oversight for all aspects of pre-hospital patient care. This applies to all medical providers and agencies throughout the emergency medical system that we have here in Sedgwick County. Some of you may remember this building as the former Murdoch Tag Office. But through extensive remodeling, we're thrilled to have Dr. Gallagher and his team here in such a great facility today. The entire project took approximately five months to complete. Total costs were $458,550.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. John Gallagher. I'm the System Medical Director for the City of Wichita and Sedgwick County, and the very excited and proud new occupant of this building. While we are extremely grateful to Chief Leek and Fire District Number One for having housed our department for so long, it is just incredible to be in a facility like this. We manage the pre-hospital protocols, the guidelines, which all of the EMTs and paramedics use to provide patient care. But we also provide the testing that is required to ensure competency within our providers. Everyone who works within our system has to pass written tests on clinical knowledge, as well as the protocol familiarity. And then they have to pass physical, hands-on testing to make sure that they have the necessary physical skills to perform the procedures appropriate for their level. And then, at the advanced level, our advanced EMTs and paramedics come into this simulation center to perform simulated patient encounters to make sure that they can take that mental knowledge and apply it in a real-world setting. So this facility will dramatically improve our effectiveness.
So all five commissioners came together to make this a reality for our Office of Medical Director today. And I want to thank all five commissioners, the other four, for helping making this happen.
We are in the outdoor area of our simulation center. We have the ambulance simulator right behind me. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls and have it very realistic to the environment that they're in every day.
This is the control room. And so all of the information from out in the simulation center is wired back here. One of the things that's important to quality testing is that the person who's in front of the camera doesn't feel like that. They have to feel and believe like they are out in the real world delivering real patient care. And so by bringing all of that information outside, piping it to a control room, we can have the exact same outcomes, but without that person feeling like they've got a false environment. In the face of an emergency, you don't get to pick your EMT or your paramedic. So one of our jobs is to make sure that anyone who shows up at your door, or at your car accident, or at your place of work, is somebody that you would be happy choosing to provide your health care.
We're here to teach you about fire safety. Do you guys know anything about fire safety?
What do we do if the door's hot? Do we go out? No, we don't open that door because we don't want all that hot smoke and fire in here. Okay.
of high fire danger, there are precautions you can take to help minimize the risk of starting a fire. Periods of high fire danger are defined by low humidity, long periods of very little moisture, and very high winds that are usually greater than 15 miles per hour. When fire danger is high, there are numerous causes that can ignite a fire with very little fuel involved. Here are some precautions that you can take. Be aware when discarding cigarettes, cigars, or other similar products. Ensure trailer chains don't drag on the ground and spark. Properly maintain vehicles to prevent sparks or flammable materials from coming out of the exhaust system. Completely extinguish all recreational burns, such as barbecue grills, chimeneas, and fire pits, with abundant amounts of water. Use extreme caution when welding or using a blowtorch. Use spark arresters on portable gasoline-powered equipment, such as lawn mowers, weed eaters, edgers, and chainsaws. Remember, open burns will not be allowed on high-fire danger days, even with valid burn permits. Please call Sedgwick County Fire District One at 660-3473, or visit www.sedgwickcounty.org if you have any questions.
Well, we have 600 miles of paved roads. And so if we're on a six-year program, that means we redo 100 miles of road every year. And this one that you see today is pavement rejuvenation.
This is actually a project that's about, one of about six or seven tools in the toolbox we use in Sedgwick County to refurbish our roads.
They heat up the pavement, and they mill off or grind up the top inch, and they recycle that. That goes back down on the road. Also with that, they put an inch of virgin material on top of that.
When they get done, this road's as if it's a brand-new road. So although this road's 11 years old, and it costs $3 million a mile to fabricate this sort of originally, we can preserve this asset indefinitely.
Some taxpayers might think it's a waste of money. They can't see with the naked eye that these roads need something done. But that's what preventive maintenance is all about. There are microcracks in that pavement that lets water get down into the sub-bass. And with that, we have freeze and thaw cycle in Kansas, which is really bad, and that's when your potholes start.
Are we wasting money or are we saving money? Well, the answer to that, of course, is we're spending some money, but the intent, of course, is to save money over time.
You keep good roads good. The road is an asset. It is not an expendable that you throw away.
Sedgwick County does it right, because we've got great staff. They have excellent skills, they have good judgment, and we invest in Sedgwick County to make sure these roads are done at the right time with the right process. And with that, this road today is a brand-new road.
I really want to thank those who were in Sedgwick County 47 years ago, who focused on making the Sedgwick County Zoo a reality. It's now the state's largest tourist attraction. We are proud of it because it demonstrates what we can do when we work together. As a partner, we've been honored to be part of this process throughout the planning. We are excited about the master plan, along with the private sector. Think about both now, and think about what our future is going to become. Let's build a foundation for the next generation.
We're thrilled to announce today our final master plan that will guide us through the next 25 years. The guiding model throughout the plan will be to do better for all the resident animals and exemplify what we did for elephants just a few years ago. We'll be reconfiguring the zoo to add more space for animals and even better experiences for our visitors. The first projects on the list are items that will address a few of the zoo's immediate needs: a new entry, expanded Amer leopard habitat, and an electric-powered train. Once those items are complete, we'll be able to think bigger. What if you could ride through the air with orangutans swinging next to you just a few feet away? Imagine watching your son or daughter get married in front of a 20,000-gallon stingray habitat. Or imagine waking up with a giraffe looking through your hotel window, right here in Wichita, Kansas. Our city has a great deal of momentum right now, and the zoo is thrilled to be part of that. But let's take just a moment, if we can, to talk about master plans and how organizations like our zoo accomplish them. Like others, we will tackle this in phases, and that is how we've accomplished so much of what we previously have accomplished out of the old master plan. It's by looking at what's most critical and factoring that in with what's doable. What we do know is the first phases of this effort, as Jeff described, needs to think about a new entryway, and that's really a key part of our first phase. With the right combination of opportunity and partnership, that this first phase will include at least one expanded animal exhibit, and that we think would likely be the Amer Leopard exhibit. Your Sedgwick County Zoo will continue to grow and expand, and it will reflect positively on this community, be a great resource for this community and our families and the visitors that visit this area with us. So thank you all for spending a warm, windy afternoon with us out here at the zoo. And we hope you'll participate as we move forward with a lot of the exciting things in our master plan.
K-96 was built in the early 1990s. Today, over 93,000 vehicles per day use that interchange. Over 9,100 are semi-trucks. By 2050, over 160,000 vehicles per day are projected to use the North Junction.
You want freight coming to you, and you want freight to be able to get to the world. People of south-central Kansas understand that essentially, it's vital that we improve that choke point or bottleneck.
You have cars just lined up, stopped, engines running, gasoline wasted. It's not cost-efficient, it's not economical.
During the executive session, no binding action was taken. Mr. Papoun, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papoun, interim county councillor. Yeah, before you, a document that I've prepared, or actually, the attorney for Ms. Powell, Karen Powell, in my office is prepared, which is entitled "Limited Waiver of Attorney/Client Privilege." The district attorney's office is wanting to interview Ms. Powell regarding a Kansas Open Meetings Act violation, potential Kansas Open Meetings Act violation. And to do so, she would have to waive, or the board would have to waive its attorney/client privilege to allow her to do so for the very limited purpose of this investigation. And I would request that you allow the chairman to sign this limited waiver of attorney/client privilege and go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Papoun. Do we have any questions for our attorney?
Yes, sir.
I don't see any questions. I'd like to move that we approve the very limited waiver of attorney/client privilege for Karen Powell to be able to discuss a potential allegation of open meetings violation by the Board of County Commissioners, as submitted by Commissioner Howell. Any, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, due in discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
One other thing, I forgot to bring the thank-you card in during other. This is a nice thank-you card from the Sedgwick County Zoo that shows the new entrance that we helped fund. On the front of it, and inside of it, we have the signatures of the staff.
That's awesome.
And I want to thank them very much for sending this up to us. I apologize that I didn't have it in during other, but it's much appreciated by all of our commissioners. And does anything else need to come before the commissioner?